Public Works Committee to order, roll call.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino. Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Catalano. Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Declare a quorum. I need approval of minutes for Public Works Committee in regular meeting.
So move.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries. Report and recommendation. A agreement for professional services with H.R. Green for construction management of the clock tower in the northeast corner of Illinois 19 and Wooddale Road. With H.R. Green and the amount not to exceed $170,967.15. That is my motion.
Second.
Roll call.
I just have two quick questions. The contract hasn't been awarded yet, right?
No, the contract has not been awarded for the clock tower. The bid opening was this morning. We're hopeful to have some more information to you by Tuesday of next week on the next steps for this project.
So on a follow-up here with this contract that we talked about awarding, it goes effective the day that we sign this contract? And is the contract, say, to the completion of the project? Or are we going to have amendment, another charge if they don't make the deadline for extension? Or is this the whole ball whack, the clock tower's up, working and everything?
Mr. York.
Well, the scope of services is to complete the project. The only way that there may be some other issues is if there's extenuating circumstances that would have caused some issue with the clock tower. So this project is a not-to-exceed amount. There's always the opportunity, if there are extenuating circumstances, to come back in the future. But we're hoping that this is a one-time shot and this is what they're supposed to do for the whole entire length of the project.
And is part of the grant money involved in this? I thought we could use that for that.
There is only so much grant money, $490,000. And the cost of the clock tower is going to exceed that by probably at least $400,000 or $600,000. So I don't really think it matters if this is, this part is coming out of the grant money or not.
I just don't want an extension of a contract that we signed a contract today and then we wait two months to start the project and we're already banging on a contract. So I don't want to. I'd rather you hold off signing the contract until it's officially bid out and the price comes to us. But I guess you can't do that.
Mr. Murmurs.
Well, that's exactly what we're doing because we were going to bring it to council next week with the clock tower. So they were going to pass at the same time, hopefully.
Mr. Jacob.
One question I have as far as, since this is technically an IDOT project, correct?
No, this is technically an our project.
This is, okay. The intersection was IDOT project. Okay, okay, thanks.
Hey, Ron, could you take a minute to explain the scope of work that this $170,000 will include for people at home?
Sure. The scope of work for the $170,000 includes construction observation. It also includes work from the design phase when this was originally designed or the project was put together. There was one alternative, no renderings, all that, no water features, et cetera, et cetera. As the council's aware, we went through four alternatives, multiple renderings. So that's rolled up into this package as well.
Any more questions? Roll call.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Epstein.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Epstein.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Next, I have approval for change order number one with H.R. Green for Phase Two Design in the northeast northwest corner of Wooddale Road and Irving Park Road. The amount not to exceed $15,000. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions?
Did this also go up a bid at the same time the clock tower? That everything's going to be done at once? Or does, and does the overseeded contract that was this, maybe it passed tonight, on 19, does that oversee that construction project in that corner too? Or is it a separate contract to oversee that project?
Mr. York.
This contract be the approval of change order one for Phase Two. This is for the design issues that came up with the coordination between issues with ComEd and Euler and Metro and IDOT for the design portion of it. This isn't construction management. This is for the initial design and putting together the plans and working with the other companies out there to get us to the point that we were opening bids this morning.
Follow up?
No, I'm good.
Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Next, I have approval for change order number one with H.R. Green for Wooddale and Irving Park 19 project for the construction management and the not-to-exceed amount of $29,509.50. That is my motion.
Second.
Could you?
Questions?
Yeah, could you give me just a brief about this change order for one, this is a brief, what it contains? What was the deal on it?
Yeah. The change order for the intersection is a direct result of the utility companies not relocating the utilities prior to construction. So when that occurred, the staging of the roadway had to be completely reconfigured in the field so that progress could be made in much smaller incremental stages. And due to that, it cost the project from when it was supposed to start to when it was supposed to end nine months. And our RE resident engineer had to be out in the field for those nine months. So it's his time to do the work of the project. It's simply, the contract got extended because the utilities got extended, which elongated the length of the project timeline.
So he was out there every day when those boxes weren't even being moved or the utility wasn't doing any work?
It's not necessarily, he was out there every day. He may have been working on paperwork over the winter or whatever. I, the time, I mean, that obviously is not nine months' worth of 40-hour weeks. You know, it's his time that he put in beyond what the timeline of the project would have been had the utilities not been in the way.
But, I'm sorry, Mike. My question is, this was IDOT project and it was a county project? Am I correct?
This was a city-sponsored project that was, that resulted in work on an IDOT facility and a county facility and a Metro facility. Thus, it had to go through IDOT with the federal guidelines with all the federal fundings and the matching state fundings that were used on the project.
Well, what I'm trying to follow up here is, was the delay in part of the contractor, ComEd, IDOT, or the county delayed the movement of this? Or did ComEd?
The utility relocations delayed the project schedule. It modified how the project was implemented. But the way the contract was set up, the engineering and the construction management cost was a city cost as opposed to covered by the federal state funding. Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out why it was delayed. I mean, I.
It was delayed because when we developed the project, if there are no utilities in the way, you could do larger swaths. Like, we did the project one half of the road at a time. So we moved traffic all to the north side or the existing westbound lanes of 19 while we constructed the southbound lanes. You could do that in one fell swoop. We had to go and do segmental pieces of that instead of the entire length. Because we were working behind areas where they were, had removed the utilities. We were working around them getting their utilities out of the way instead of being unencumbered and be able to do large, large pieces or a half of the project in one fell swoop. So it was broken up into smaller increments, if that makes sense to you?
No, I still say it's IDOT and county project that they delayed that we shouldn't pay it all out. I mean, that's my opinion.
Sure, understood.
Is a punch list done on this project?
Punch list is not done. I haven't read today's weekly report, but.
The punch list is still wrapped up in IDOT's issues. So once IDOT does their punch list, then Donovan will come in and finish the work. But until, actually, some work was done this week. If you noticed that the, at the park area, the dirt was spread and seed was put down. At the, we call it the pork chop at Commercial, that red stamped concrete was completed. So some work has been completed, but there are still punch list items out there that haven't been addressed yet.
Peter.
One question for Mr. Murmurs. Is the whole, I mean, as long as everything passes, does this clock project get done before the end of the year?
Murmurs?
Yeah, the plan is still to get shovels in the ground this fall, do some of the hardscape. But the plan was always to have the softscape landscaping wrapped up next year. So it's not finished this year. It'll start this year and finish next year.
Other questions?
Here.
Mr. Wesley.
Matt, you mentioned about the punch list just now. Is this punch list from our punch list or the state punch list? Or which punch list are they going by? I understand that you said the state. Does that mean the contractor say, bye, I'm done? Because it's a state project and a county project?
Mr. York.
We have our punch list items that are ready to be handed to them when they receive the state punch list. The state has not done any of their punch walk yet. So until the state has done their punch walk and then given them the list, they get, I believe it's 15 days or, I believe it's 15 days. From that point in time, they have 15 calendar days to, or 15 working days to complete the punch list, all the punch lists. And then at that point in time, the state will then decide whether or not they will seek liquidated damages from the contractor if that work has not yet been completed.
Wesley.
So the payout is through the state, not through the city?
The payout for this project has always been through the state.
So in return, the state could say, we're done with, forget about the city, Wooddale is punch list at one time too, if they decide to do that, right?
Mr. York.
The state's has been working in coordination with us on all of our issues as well. So whereas your statement may be true, I do not believe that the state will allow the project to be completed in satisfactory manner.
Okay, one more question. The islands, who maintains those now and for how long and in the future?
Mr. York.
We have been watering and pulling the weeds on those islands to the best of our ability. And then moving forward, those will be our islands. We wanted them to look that way. So we will be the ones that are responsible for the upkeep and maintenance of them moving forward. So something similar to this. And in watching some previous meetings and working on the clock tower memo, it was discussed back in March that at some point in time, we will probably need somebody to take care of the clock tower areas as well as those islands. Because those will be extremely intense landscaping issues.
When you say the island, you mean the one island on the east and in the clock tower area, correct?
I'm talking the two island, the island on Irving Park Road, the island on Wooddale Road and then, and then the two corners.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley. Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
She carries. Next, I have an approval for a contract with Thomas Engineering Group, LLC for engineering services, the pedestrian bridge repairs, and the not-to-exceed amount of $19,526.98. That's my motion.
Second.
Mr. Wesley.
So we've got the engineer report out here. Are we, do we have to budget for this to get all these repairs done? Because obviously the pictures that I got, there's some major repairs here.
Mr. York.
Yes, originally, we had $30,000 budgeted for this year to do some minor maintenance, some painting. When we had Thomas come out to do a little deeper inspection, because we didn't feel that by, our thoughts were that it wasn't, it wasn't just minimal repairs that needed to be done. So we are asking that we utilize those $30,000 that we had set aside for bridge repairs to do the engineering, or engineering for this year and then utilize the results of that, of this portion of the project for the CIP for next year. We also know that we have some medallions up there now with the logo on it. If we want to redo the rebranding, some of those things are going to come into play very quickly. And we would like to kind of stage everything together and do everything in one fell swoop. So that this will be a good opportunity to kind of get our arms wrapped around exactly what needs to be done there. Hopefully done in time for the 19 CIP so we can get in the CIP plan, so we can hit the ground running in May and get those repairs done to that bridge.
So one follow-up. So my question, so we gave, make sure I got this right. We gave authorization, $30,000 we put in to decide to repair. We gave authorization to go out for engineering to check it out. I'm just asking a question.
Mr. York.
Originally, the authorization was for $30,000 for repairs made to the bridge.
Okay.
Okay? So when we were getting ready to put the bid or the minimalistic bids back out there to get those prices, we knew that that wasn't going to fix our problems. So that's why we're asking to utilize that $30,000 that we set aside for bridge repairs to pay Thomas the $19,526.98 to do this project, to get the, do the engineering of this project so that in the next year's CIP, we can put in how much money we need to make the repairs and then make the repairs. So there's $30,000 set aside to work on that bridge. And we want to utilize that for a good set of engineering drawings and plans to fix the bridge instead of just pressure washing it and putting some paint on it.
Any other questions?
I want to make sure I understand. So the $30,000 was put off to the side for the repairs. I got that. So we took $19,000 out of the, was supposed to be for repairs, right?
That's what's on, that's what's on the table today, is that $19,000. That's what we want to prove.
Well, you already had the inspection done, right? These pictures come from?
We've had the, we've had the inspection done. This is for the engineering to fix all the issues that they found in the inspection. So the inspection was already done. That was $3,000.
Okay, I got it, thank you.
So just to clarify further, this is basically an extension of the inspection saying, whoa, this has more issues than we thought it had. We need this money to actually put together an actual design plan. It's not a power wash and hammer nail kind of fix?
Yes.
Okay, makes sense.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Motion carries. Let's have an award for a contract with median improvements on Ash Avenue for a quiet zone, for the quiet zone. To ALAM Concrete Contractors and not-to-exceed amount $42,885.05.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Questions? This isn't guaranteeing us a quiet zone, right? I mean, it says pour the quiet zone, but they can still say no, correct? Matt?
Yes, I mean, as part of speaking with the federal, or the Federal Railroad Association or Administration, this is one of the requirements. So we have to do this in order to get the quiet zone. If we don't do this, we won't get the quiet zone for sure. But, I mean, this is, this is one step forward. In our application, we said that we would do this and that was what we said we would do, so that's what we have to.
Where are the median improvements going? Oh, Chief.
I was just going to expand on that. Now, if you wanted to, we could wait until they approve it with that design in there, but then you're probably talking next fall before that gets done. Whereas if they give approval in December here for a quiet zone, this will all be installed, ready to go. And basically, they'll come out and say, yep, this is in place, you guys are officially a quiet zone. Regardless, it's probably, it's a supplemental safety measure that will reduce any type of crash index there anyways. So it's probably a good measure to have anyways, a small median there that'll prevent cars from driving around the gates when they're lowered, so.
Ready?
Just a few things. I know we have some very anxious people waiting for that, that noise to end. So if it's awarded, you're telling me that if we are awarded this and it's approved, excuse me, if it's approved, we are going to have time for this contractor to come in, install this by the time they give us the approval?
To award this in October, okay, we can get the company, hopefully they have it all completed by Thanksgiving.
Okay.
Okay? We have not been given a date on when the quiet zone is going to be awarded, but the hope is by the end of this year. So if, but if it, okay, but if, if, but if we said that we were going to do this and we didn't have the islands in or the medians in, then we wouldn't get the quiet zone award until that got done. So.
It wouldn't have an impact on whether they said yes or no?
It wouldn't have an impact on whether they said yes or no, but if they would say yes, but you have to get the, you have to get the medians in. Now, we can say, we have the medians in, we have the award, we're moving forward. So this is a step that we're going to have to take one way or the other.
Chief, just so people know what to expect, it's going to be similar to the yellow, what do you call them, stanchions that they see on York Road?
Ballards.
Ballards, there they come, on Church Road? Or is that not right?
I believe this is going to be a little bit wider of a median, but it will be a raised concrete median. Matt could probably speak to if there's going to be anything on top of the median.
Yes, the stanchions on Wooddale Road and is because the, the height of the median did not meet the requirements of the federal highway for the whole length of the medians. They have to be at least six inches. These will be over six inches, so there won't be the yellow, the ballards. So it'll just be a asphalt, or excuse me, a concrete median. Big old hunk of concrete out there. Stop, make people go around, around it instead of cut through the middle of the grates.
Just so we don't have any confusion, Bensville is a quiet zone now?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
But the way I read that whole thing, it's not guaranteed a quiet zone. So I don't want people calling saying, I heard a train whistle, because I sat downtown Bensville and the plane was going off. He was blowing the horn all the way through town. And I looked it up and it says it's to the direction of the engineer. If he feels it's an unsafe intersection, he has the right to do it. So just so we don't have residents saying, well, you guys told us you got a quiet zone and then all of a sudden that train goes through blowing the horn. Let them know that it's not 100%. You do have some engineers that like to pull that horn a lot through our town extensively.
And it's my understanding they do follow that, but if you have someone walking right next to the tracks or a car that they feel is too close, they will sound the horn and they have the right to. But they do generally follow the restrictions of a quiet zone.
I just wanted to make, you know you're going to get a phone call if you hear the horn go through and you'll be getting it.
85%?
Right. Any other questions? Peter.
I just have a question for Mr. York. And this is not exactly what they asked, but you had made a statement that on Wooddale Road, the curbs were not six inches, so we had to put those. I mean, we had an engineer design that to meet the quiet zone. Why weren't they made six inches high to begin with?
Mr. York.
Yeah, they, there were parts that were six inches, there was part that were five and three-quarter inches. I think it was, I don't know, a construction issue, but I do not know exactly why that has happened. But I know that for this project, these medians will meet those requirements and we'll go from there.
Roll call.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Motion carries. Important recommendation for change order with Robinson Engineering to reduce the amount for the Prospect Potter and Park Lane Project contract award and the not-to-exceed amount of $5,640.10 from $362,945 to $357,304.59. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? No questions on reductions, huh?
We will not have it.
Roll call.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Thank you, and yes.
Last but not least, approval of final payment request for Martham Construction for the Prospect Potter Park and Park Project and the not-to-exceed amount of $59,386.05. My motion.
Second.
Questions?
Is there any retainer being hold back for that grass warranty?
There is a maintenance bond for this project. I knew you were going to ask that as soon as you started talking and I can't remember off the top of my head, but I can get that for you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley. Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alderman Sizmarsky. In the packet itself, the maintenance bond's in there, $36,295. Does that change your vote, Alderman Wesley?
Such a foul word.
Mine would be changed.
Thank you.
Did the minute taker read that you changed your vote?
Yes, she did.
Yes, she did.
Next we got items for consideration for future meetings. Wanted a storm, stormwater cost share, December fourteenth. Disposal of old tree, old street signs, December fourteenth. Forest reserves and land swap to be discussed and, or to be determined. Irving Park Road, street si, streetlights to be determined. And that's it. Any motion for adjournment? Anything else? Peter?
I'd like to add one thing on there. I'd like to discuss the Potter Street Pond that we spent money on to make it look nice and be a rain garden. Looks like we haven't done anything there. So, I'd like to put that on the agenda to discuss.
Thought it's sort of a rain garden, thought it's supposed to just grow. What, what is the maintenance thing on it?
Uh, that maintenance is, uh, come and gone, but I've got a maintenance guy. I got maintenance stuff coming up soon on that, so we'll bring all that together.
Thing else? Uh, Mr. Woods?
Yeah, with the, uh, disposal of old street signs, who's taking those down? Is that part of the contract or is?
Yeah. Yeah, that is part of the contract and those will be, um, returned to Public Works and then we'll, um, bring forward some ideas in December on, on what to do with those.
Polls, signs, everything?
Yeah, polls, signs, everything.
Thank you.
Adrian?
I have two follow-up on Elizabeth Park Pond. What's it is on the maintenance of that pond and we had an issue with the, the contractor on that. The other thing is, I would like to know the update on the Edgewood Sidewalk bunch list. And when I ask them, they follow me during, on the Williams Inquirer.
There will be information in the manager's report regarding Edgewood tomorrow.
Manager's report for when it's.
Yes. And there's also information in the manager's report about the, uh.
Elizabeth Park?
Elizabeth Park, yes.
Good.
I have one more thing to add. For one of our next meetings, for Mr. York, or to explain to the residents what's being done with the signs. I, I see there's flags being put up and some of them don't look like, it looks like some of them are being put up in different spots, so maybe if, at a future meeting, we could explain to the residents exactly what's happening with the signs.
The signs will be up by that time. They're gonna be done by that time.
Yeah, that's kind of.
They're gonna be done by that time. So, why don't you ask them now?
I'll prepare something and get it out to everybody, um, probably beginning of next week.
She has something?
Yes.
But you had something.
Oh, no, good.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any public, uh, at the end, uh, any public stuff before adjournment? Those are. May I wait till the end, uh, to let all of the councilors and the mayors speak? And, uh, but I was just wondering if there is time for any type of, uh, issues to be brought up by citizens of Wooddale?
Mayor?
And may I only come to these meetings when these, uh, issues become intolerable?
All right. Public comment is usually at council meetings. That's next week. Unless, uh, in the past, if there was an item on the agenda and a resident wanted to talk, speak to that item on the agenda, then we let him, we gave him three minutes to speak on the agenda. But next week is the council meeting and that's when public comment is heard.
Is there anything on the agenda? Is it something?
Well, I guess if you wanna give three minutes, we could give three minutes.
That's up to the chairman of the, whatever committee it is.
They're here.
Uh, I've already seen people adjourned, so.
But there's another meeting.
No, there's another meeting after this.
There's like, three meetings.
Okay, I don't follow, you know, what happens after, after. So, this is.
You just have to go to the podium and.
You didn't give an all, we didn't get a roll call anyways on the adjournments, so we're not adjourned yet. All right.
So, is that, is that okay?
Yeah, you have to go to the podium.
It'll only be about two to three minutes at most, sir. Or thank you, council, and, uh, thank you, mayor. I was just jotting down some quick notes, uh, so I wouldn't forget.
Did you? Could you help her with that, Mike? Is it on?
Uh, my name is Jessica Davis. Uh, just in case if that needs to be on record. Um, I am in the corner of Ward Four. Um, I'm probably one of the last streets of Wooddale. My electricity comes from Bensonville, so there, that, that is, uh, some issues when we have severe storms. And I know that I've dealt with, uh, with the mayor in the past. Uh, lately, it's been better, so I think that they've done the tree cutting, so, uh, I haven't, haven't seen anything like that. Uh, one thing I do wanna thank, uh, Mr., uh, Mike Sizmarski for, uh, getting the street light on I task a street, but unfortunately, it is insufficient. And, uh, what I'm concerned about is I have recently probably spent over two thousand dollars for, uh, lighting systems for my home, uh, for fog lights and also for surveillance, uh, video. As most of you know, well, the people that know me, uh, I have worked doing cybersecurity, so I know I keep track of the, things like that. Uh, so, in my neighborhood, if the lights are off on my half of the street, it is like living on a country road. Uh, there is no, there is no, um, ability to really see. Like, if you look down by your house from my house, i- if lights are, if the neighbors are not keeping their lights on, uh, then it, it's quite impossible to see what's coming down the road, so I'm always having to use those, um, uh, what do you call them? The, the, uh, the new, the new track lights, you know, the ones that have the high beams, uh, that you can see like five nautical away, you know, things like that. So, I'm really, um, concerned because now I am spending more money on electrical systems because I have, uh, schedules set on my lights. Uh, I have, um, two, two fog lights in the, uh, the driveway, which can probably sit about eight vehicles. Um, the doorbells themselves do not have lights. Uh, I have, uh, one, one fog light in the front and all of these, these lights have cameras as well and can actually see in night vision as well. Uh, and in the back, uh, in the back of my house, I have, uh, three, three fog lights with, um, which are, are pretty, you know, they're pretty bright because they have the, uh, LED type, uh, lights. And they all are also set for, uh, night vision as well as motion detection. So, you can tweak your motion detection to people. Uh, it, it looks at heart, you know, it looks at heat signatures. So, sometimes, you know, if you have a vehicle, uh, that's rather large, it may pick up that light. But, uh, you have to actually go out and, and really assess your area. I do not want to intrude on neighbors. And I have talked to my neighbors saying, you know, hey, these lights are only, uh, you can actually draw the, the, the system around. So, I said, you know, these lights are not looking in your direction. Uh, so, the neighbors have been very receptive about that and have appreciated having lights on at night. Uh, but, you know, with, uh, if I need to pull comm ed, uh, electrical, uh, bills, I would like to see, you know, what am I spending because I'm having all these lights on all night long. And, you know, as taxpayers, we're paying for these lights, but we have, we don't have lights on our street. We have one light that is like eight houses down from me. And, uh, that, that leads me to my next, uh, my next section, which is, uh, we, it has been known and it has been spoken by several of the council members here, uh, that we know that we do have down the street potential, uh, drug dealers. Uh, and I have during the wintertime, in the summertime, I have, I'm an insomniac and that has caused some issues, which will not be discussed or brought up during this, uh, discussion because I am working with Chief Vest on this. Uh, but, um, I have come out at two, three in the morning and you can see that there are people back and forth to vehicles and cars waiting at night, uh, to, to pick up packages and things like that. Uh, and yet, when you pass these homes, you see that there's, um, my driveway, I know, holds about eight cars. Their driveways are completely full and this is almost twenty-four hours a day. So, this is a little bit concerning. Now, I know down the street is, is Bensonville. Uh, if you take I task a to Spruce, um, there's a group there as well, but they're mostly partiers, I'll say, you know, till three, four in the morning. Um, I'm not sure if on, uh, uh, Mr. Sizmarski, you live on Edgewood, correct? Is that the street? I can't think of the street. I'm sorry.
Edgewood, correct.
Correct. And I know that some of the people that were, um, associated with the house that is on our street is now associated on your street. I see that now that you have a lot of vehicles, uh, jam-packed in your, your neighborhood too. So, so these are some concerns I have as a citizen, as well as a cybersecurity person, um, as well as a, um, several years, well, I have over twenty years in government experience and plus I've worked at Microsoft. And, um, so, a lot of these things, um, are of concern to me knowing what I know in, in government. Uh, so, the last thing that I'd like to bring up and hopefully that I, I'm, I'm sorry if I'm going over the three minutes, but this is my last bullet point for to, for this evening, is that I would like to, uh, I, I don't know because we are the last street, uh, or maybe near the last street from Foster and Spruce. Um, like I said, my cameras, uh, will, if I, if I point them to point to the street, which I don't, I try to keep privacy. Uh, but if there's something going on, I will turn up the, um, the length of the, the visual of the, the cameras. But, uh, I have not been seeing in several months, uh, but once, you know, maybe once in a while. Uh, I, I've only had these cameras up probably about, uh, since May, uh, oh, since August, since early August. But visually, we do not seem to have much, uh, police patrol in our neighborhood. And I don't know if it's because we're just one block or what. Um, I know that Mr. Sizmarski has, uh, had some, um, some, some stuff to sign and I support him. Uh, I've always have supported him as my alderman. And, uh, so, you know, when the police knock on the door, my neighbors are like, what the hell's going on? You know, are you getting arrested? Or, you know, I'm like, hey, slow down, slow down. It was just something that, uh, you know, that the police or, you know, Mr. Sizmarski is trying to pass something with the council and, and so I do sign those things. But that is it. Um, honestly, those are the three things. The electrical, it would be, it would be good to see uh, if there is some way that the city can go ahead and either, uh, monitor with comm ed, uh, nighttime lighting. I, I mean, that, I, I, I don't know what to ask. I'm, I'm just asking it. Nighttime lighting from houses, um, away from that, oops, excuse me, away from that, that, that light. And then also, you know, I, I would be glad for the next few months to, to try to see if I can calculate. I don't know, it, you know, if comm ed shows hourly or whatever, but I can even provide that for the city to take a look at because I'm, you know, like I said, I'm running fog lights, so that, that's a lot of, uh, I mean, even though LEDs and, um, now we're using, uh, different, uh, types of, uh, lighting systems and they work well, but I don't know how much electricity that they are using. But I prefer to have that and spend the extra money and be safe. Safer, let me just say that. I mean, I can turn them off and have night vision, but night vision is not, it's, it's, it's hard to recognize, so.
Mayor?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just, thank you for the comments.
Yes. And that's all, that's all I had.
And as far as the streetlights, uh, we'll look into that because we do have a city streetlight program when residents ask for more streetlights.
Okay.
There's, so we have a policy. I'm sure we could look to see.
Yeah, somebody can take a look at I task a street at night.
We'll look at the policy and, uh, the aldermen already nodding their heads for your area.
Oh, okay, so, 'cause like I said, I can look at Eugene's house from here or, you know, councilman or alderman Eugene Wesley.
So, we'll look into that for you.
And, and see that. Thank you, sir. And then, like I said, if, if, if we can have a little bit more, uh, you know, patrol, just, just so the, you know, there are neighbors that I have. I don't know if they have reported it and maybe the police can answer that question. Uh, not, you know, to you all, not to me, I don't care. Uh, but there have been a lot of, uh, break-ins into garages and stealing of stuff. And I ask them, like, did you call the cops? They're like, no. What's the point? Uh, you know, the door might have been unlocked or this might. And, and I said, what if they, if we don't do that, then how are they supposed to know? So, I, I'm just trying to be vocal for, for some and maybe this might help others speak up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sirs.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate your time.
I'm gonna call the finance admin.
You got, roll call for adjournment? Roll call for adjournment? There was a motion and a second.
Second.
There wasn't a motion. I think there. All in favor? Opposed? I didn't know if we had a second.
Good evening. I'll call, I'll call the finance and administration committee to order. Uh, minute taker, note the same people are present. Uh, first, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve that. Uh, is there a, a motion for the approval of minutes from September fourteenth, two thousand seven?
You just did that. We just.
Oh, sorry. No, sorry, yeah. Got distracted. Any questions, comments, corrections? None? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. First piece of business, the report and recommendation. Uh, first item, this will be, uh, at Cage to discuss the TIF application request for Hegel Logistics.
Great. Thank you, Chairman. Um, as you just mentioned, this is a TIF application request, uh, for one thousand and one Middle Boulevard. Uh, just a couple of slides, just to orientate everyone. Uh, one thousand and one Middle is just south of the, uh, new I three ninety Elgin O'Hare. Building has been vacant for, um, approximately three-plus years. Um, it's the former Yuson Building, just to orient, orientate people. What the applicant is requesting, Hegel Logistics, um, is relocating to this location. Um, they're requesting TIF funding to do this. Um, it's a valid TIF application, um, because they are, two parts of the, uh, application are valid. One is you can apply for relocation, um, costs or the refunds of relocation costs. And the other portion of it is that they are making substantial improvements to the building at that location. So, um, they're requesting three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, as you well know, the TIF district was established in two thousand and fifteen, uh, six hundred and three acre area. Uh, six hundred and three acre area. Um, so the, uh, Hegel Logistics, uh, was looking into, um, new locations. They were previously over at eight fifty-five North Wooddale Road. And they were looking at different communities. Um, obviously, if, you know, from an economic development standpoint, um, retaining key businesses with their employees, uh, is a priority. Uh, and that's exactly why we're here this evening. Worked with the applicant. So, uh, that's one portion of the, of the application and to kind of the bigger picture, which, um, I'll just give you a little information on that. Um, and then we can open it up for questions is that with Hegel Logistics locating to one thousand and one, uh, Middle Boulevard, uh, that opens some space, obviously at eight fifty-five Wooddale Road, um, which, uh, a new business from a neighboring community, uh, is moving to that location. So there's some additional benefits. That's not what's for discussion. It's more for, you know, kind of for informational purposes. In terms of, um, finances, the, uh, TIF application requires financial information. And I've just realized that, uh, I don't think I can read it, so probably we're gonna have a struggle. But that information, um, was submitted by the applicant through the, their consultant, Liston, um, and San Tidus. Um, sorry, not being very good with my names today. Basically, that information, uh, provides a forecast, uh, and kind of the important things on the forecast is that it's currently, it's a vacant building. Obviously, having a tenant go in there, making substantial, uh, major improvements to the building um, and to the property, obviously will increase that assessed value. The projected assessed value currently today is one million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And. Yes, absolutely.
Oliver Samarsky has a question.
I just wanted to know, that, is that the Madden Building? Madden was in? By Ball, cut ball, Ball Court?
Just north of Madden.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. I'm trying to figure that spot out.
Sure. As, um, as you're driving north on Middle, Madden's on the east side.
Yep.
Next building along. Um, so i- in terms of the, uh, assessed value, like I said, we're at one point two, um, million as exists, obviously. Um, within two years, that assessed value is forecasted to go up to one million, nine hundred and four, uh, thousand dollars, seven hundred and seventy-eight. Obviously, that increase in value exceeds the requested, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I will draw your attention to the following year, obviously, that assessed value is forecasted to go above that, obviously to two million, one hundred and eight thousand, uh, and forty-two dollars. Essentially, what that means is the, um, the TIF funding is covered by the increase in assessed value. Um, the other things that aren't part of the application, more of the FYI that I mentioned earlier. Obviously, you have building permits for Hegel to, uh, relocate to this lo- uh, location, inspection fees. And then you have the new, um, the new business, um, relocating to the former Hegel site on Wooddale Road, which, um, also adds significant permit fees and inspection fees. And then really, just to sum it up and I'll open up for questions, um, you know, key parts to this application, the city retains a valued existing business, uh, and obviously their employees. Um, they did look at other locations, uh, they did want to stay in Wooddale. And obviously, uh, it's a close location to them, uh, which is great news. The TIF application assists with the occupation of one thousand and one Middle, which has been vacant for a number of years. It's been vacant for as long as I've been here, which um, is a concern because it's A, in the TIF district and B, it's right next to, right south adjacent to I three ninety. Uh, so it's one of our front doors, uh, if you will. Um, the TIF fund application request will be paid off. Uh, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar request will be paid off in two years, uh, due to the increase in assessed property value. And then a couple of the items that I mentioned earlier, the, uh, TIF application facilitates the relocation, uh, of a new business from a neighboring community, um, obviously with their employees and then the permanent inspection fees. So that's, that's the summary. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. We'll open it up to questions. Before I do that, I just want to say, uh, kudos to staff for keeping the business in town. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Alderman Jacob?
Uh, first, I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Is that good?
Uh, second of all, I did have a couple of questions, if I may.
Sure. Questions, comments? We'll start with you, Jacob.
The one question I have is, is the tenant already moved? Cause I, I thought I saw something about September first.
Ed?
Uh, yes, that's an excellent point. I apologize for, um, skipping that. The, the TIF process, um, uh, we don't move as quickly as the businesses do. So the, uh, businesses have looked at this location, um, they've moved location. They understand that the TIF application, there's a certain process to it. Um, and it's not something that we can do in a week or two weeks. They're fairly confident in the city of Wooddale, which is exactly why they're staying here, that this will be reviewed and, and, and given, uh, consideration. But yes, they, they had a, they had a deadline of September the first. They, they can't wait around. You know, obviously, moving all that equipment is a major issue. And then just my last point on that. Uh, there is a major, or there was a major issue, uh, dealing with ComEd and obtaining the amount of power they need for that building. So timing was key for them and also timing was key for the other business to relocate as well.
That's a great point.
Uh, one follow-up. I, I guess my question is, did, I mean, do we just find out about it this month or have we known? I mean, I just feel we should have been told about this a little bit earlier. It seems like they've already moved, come and gone.
Ed?
Um, yes, I've known about this for some time. Um, a number of these items that, um, come to the council. And that's why I'm not revealing the information of the other business. Um, and we've talked about, um, other applications and other buildings where as much as I'd like to tell you, um, it's not public knowledge. It's, you know, it's not my information, um, that I would be providing. So very considerate of that. They've been working on this. The owner of the building has been talking with me, um, for at least six months. Because it's, it's a very complicated deal for them in terms of upgrading that building, getting the power, dealing with ComEd. As we all know, can be challenging sometimes. They've, even so much so that they've had to purchase a generator, uh, just to boost that power for the interim time period. And then, of course, moving out of the other location and the other business coming in. So we have known about it for some time. It's not something that they've done lightly. They've consulted with us. Uh, and I believe that's, you know, one of the major reasons that they're relocating in Wooddale rather than going to another community. Thank you.
Alderman Leslie?
Couple of questions. You said the owner of the building. The owner of the building owns the company too?
Ed?
The owner of the building is Bristol Group Incorporated and the tenant is Hegel Logistics.
So it's not the same?
They're two different entities.
So you got the owner here and you got the tenant here. They got a lease, right?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, same thing with the other building? Is that, I take it as a lease too?
Yes, it is. That's correct.
Okay. Um, so they're requesting three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Correct.
How long is their lease?
Ed?
I'm not privy to their lease details, but as, as a note to that, um, if this is received well, um, there will be an agreement drafted by, um, the city attorney, Pat Bond, um, that will require a certain timeframe from the city's standpoint. Obviously, we don't want to commit funds for a business that's gonna relocate within six months or a year. So there'll be a timeframe inserted into our document. We're not privy to their lease, but I believe, um, from our discussions, it's a five-year lease.
Another question?
I do. So how many employees does this company have?
Ed, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Um, Hegel has approximately fifty to fifty-five employees.
Right?
Yep.
Comparison? Go ahead. Can I limit it to one more question?
One more?
Mm-hmm.
Why you only one?
Because we have a whole panel that has questions.
Okay, I might have one.
Go ahead. Make it a good one.
Uh, Ed, I was reading your memo here. It says that you, that you didn't go to Freeman for a review of his TIF. Why, we have professional people that we would use Freeman as our TIF people, as professionals. And so I have a problem that we could go to sta- we got professionals to do this. And to make this judgment for us, true, we have to pay. I have more confidence in a company like this that does the TIF than our city staff that does not have experience like they do.
Is that right?
So I don't have faith in city's recommendation for this at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which they don't own the building. Plus, what's our master plan say where the, what should be in that spot?
So a couple of questions there. We'll let Jeff answer that and.
Yeah, real quick, um, if you want to be mad, you can be mad at me. I told them not to have S.B. Friedman review it because I thought Brad, um, together with Ed, because it was such a no-brainer application and we were getting our money back within two years, uh, stealing a, a business from another community, um, sales tax likely from that business, keeping a business in town. So it was kind of a no-brainer. So I thought you guys would actually be excited that we were saving the money.
So Jeff?
Can I respond to this?
I'll ask myself one question and then I'll let you respond. How, how long is that TIF for? How many years?
Well, TIFT issue is usually twenty-three years.
Twenty-three. And we're getting ROI in two years?
Two years.
Okay, thank you. Um, you have a follow-up question?
Well, I didn't get on my answers. The question was, what does the master plan say where that, what was that in that position?
Okay.
And the second question was now, since Jeff said something, you're saying tax dollars. Sales tax?
Correct.
How much?
We don't know. We think potentially some sales tax dollars would be derived, but we're still taking a business from another community, bringing it into our community, keeping a business, plus return on investment right away. So it seemed like a no-brainer to save those dollars.
So let me just recap some of this stuff because I know Brad and I had a conversation. We, we stole a business from another community. Lured, excuse me. Lured. Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we attracted, uh, another business from a neighboring community that would have stayed there into here. We are filling a building that's been vacant for how many years? Five years. Putting them back on the tax roll. And we have these guys moving to a bigger building, which will have a higher assessed value and bringing us more property tax and paying back this in two years.
Correct.
Okay. Do we have, we have a motion on the floor, correct?
In a second.
In a second. Any few other questions?
I'd like to get the answer to what did the master plan say where that, what was in that building?
Can you answer that last question? Ed?
Um, exactly. The existing building is, uh, um, has dog doors. It's a logistics building with an office component, which is perfect for Hegel. That is what is indicated on the master plan. The, the master pla- the Thondale master plan, and I know, I don't want to elaborate too much because I know you guys actually know more of the history than I do, um, because a number of you were, were here. Uh, the corporate main street is, is, um, orientated east, uh, of Wooddale Road. Uh, and then this is west side of, obviously of Wooddale Road. So logistics is what the building is, uh, and that's what the plan calls for industrial.
Have Ed on from Alderman Samarsky?
Yes, for staff. I don't know if you guys might want to entertain Seva, see if they want to take over the rest of that building since they buy buildings in Oak Grove all over and here. They have that, currently have the other half of that building.
Correct.
So they might want to move down. Their business is mainly Target, Target stores.
Thanks, Oliver Samarsky. Ed, got that noted?
Yep.
Okay. Did you get your answer?
No. The, the, what's the master, what says? Huh?
Okay.
It says, it says allow, but our grand master plan that we spend millions of dollars, it's in their back room. Does that show that is, shows a, a, a building like that or does it show a hotel?
So one final response and then go to the other questions. Go ahead, Ed.
The, the, the picture from next door that I believe, uh, Alderman Wesley is ref- uh, referring to is the corporate main street, which is east of Wooddale Road. Obviously, this is west. Um, it's Indian Industrial Park. It's slated for industrial development. It's an industrial building. That's what the use is. I mean, I, I'm trying to ask, answer the question. I think we, you know, the, the Thondale master plan was broken, broken up into different sections. Corporate main street, which I, I know we had, um, some lofty aspirations of what would be there, hotels, um, residential offices, et cetera. Was mainly focused between, um, kind of Edgewood and, um, uh, Wooddale Road. The other areas that, um, uh, that we would be familiar, familiar with would be either, you know, industrial or office. So that's what was slated in that plan of, uh, two thousand and ten. And then just very briefly, um, we had a meeting just the other day, steering committee for the new comprehensive plan that we're working on. And their consultants have, you know, told us what we already know, which the plan from two thousand and ten, had some lofty, um, lofty goals, which is great, but maybe not as realistic as perhaps we wanted. And that, we're gonna be in the process of modifying that because some of the things that we wanted to achieve, you know, with certain office spaces, um, and we have a, you know, large building up the road that's been sitting vacant for a number of years, the office market just isn't there. So what we're seeing, um, and I know you guys know this, what we're seeing is a big push on logistics, um, up by Amazon, um, north middle. There's a lot of activity up there because that, we have a great location. We're close to O'Hare. We're close to all the expressways. We got a new expressway opening, in, in a month or so. And logistics and industrial right now, you know, class A is kind of where the market is at. Sorry, long answer to a.
Great. And then Mayor, you head?
To the question.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I know we talk about the three fifty and they're telling us two years personally. I think when I spoke to both Brad and, and Ed, I figured probably three years. The numbers make sense, but, you know, I like to be safe. And then I had the question of, that was their first, that's what they want, that's what they asked for and that's what we gave them. And their response right away was, well, no, they asked for more. We negotiated less. I really didn't ask how much more. I, it wasn't like, I caught them by surprise. I was looking them right in the eye and they were very calm and, oh, no, they wanted more, but we negotiated less. So I feel comfortable.
Just to echo that point, um, they did ask for more money. We, we negotiated with them twice. So they did move on the number first time and the second.
Right. So we've negotiated. They've worked with us. They've put their faith in us. And I personally hope, think we should hold them hostage from making a move, uh, based on our schedule. So entertain two more questions. Alderman Woods and then Alderman Eugene.
Mine will actually be, uh, an answer to Alderman Wesley's question of the lease. The lease term is a hundred and twenty-eight months. Ten years and eight months.
For the new space on Middle?
For the new space.
Thank you.
Why is it written in here?
It is.
Not the back, not the one?
If you read the small print like I always do.
Better I say than I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Small Print. Appreciate it. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Well, I, I just have this question. So Mayor's question, the vows they're asking for will be paid back to us in two years.
Brad? Or Mary?
No, no, no.
Oh, sorry. Brad?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, based upon the, uh, property valuations, it's estimated that we'll get that back within two years. Uh, it is gonna be contingent upon when it gets reassessed and how that cycle goes, but based upon the property, the discount that they get now for it being vacant for so long and then the new improvements that are going on in there, um, it is expected to recoup, uh, that value, uh, within about two years, in our way of about two years, based on the property tax and the.
We'll say the mayor's math is three.
I have two more questions.
You say one more question? Cause you got two total. So you have two more?
They're growing.
Okay. First question?
The other question is, you guys said it's gonna bring us sales taxes.
No.
So how many are coming?
Yeah. Uh, Jeff, you want to address that? You did, you did say sales tax.
No, I said the business coming in that is moving from another town would potentially bring us sales tax.
Yeah, there would be no business.
Not the, not the TIF applicant.
So what happens if the deal falls through with this other building? We're going to make in that building?
I think Jeff mentioned that. There's gonna be a rider in this agreement, if we approve it, that will address that. That's as if they, they.
He didn't say that. He didn't say that.
Yes. Ed?
So, um.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna let him, I'm letting him answer it. Go ahead.
Okay. So, so this, what we're talking about is the TIF application for one thousand and one Middle, um, for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They have, thank you, uh, a longer lease than, uh, I had anticipated. The prospective business that is relocating to their former location, there's a possibility, uh, of sales tax. And they have a permit in right now. They're work- And they have a permit in right now. They're working on filling that space at eight fifty-five North Wooddale Road. They're spending a considerable amount of money refitting that building. So, and that application is, it's not an application that's part of this. It's more for information. So, I wanted to make you guys aware that they're moving into that location. They wouldn't spend that kind of money and move all their equipment from three locations in our neighboring community into one facility in Wooddale.
What, what I'm trying to say here is if, if you're saying the area got building permits for that one on Wooddale Road, why is it top secret that we don't know what's going in there?
Well...
I mean, I just, and the rider thing, where did that rider thing come from?
Go on, go ahead.
First of all, it's someone else's information. It's not top secret. I'd be happy to share it with you. I just don't necessarily want to do it on camera because it's not my business. It's not my information. I'd be happy to share that with you.
But where's the rider thing comes in play? That everyone says there's a rider that I didn't know about?
I said it. It could be an error. We'll let...
We do cut a deal here.
Can you address it? We'll let the mayor address it. Go ahead.
All right. I asked the question, what happens? We give this money and these guys are gone in a year. The response was, Mr. Bond is drafting the letter that we will be protected. I believe it's five to seven years. They weren't sure on the years because I asked that question actually tonight. So... But it's our attorney's job to protect us. I mean, he'll be here next week and he can answer those questions. And, right, that's, that's what you were talking about, the rider.
Right. That's not a rider. It's just...
And that's only for the, the old use in building on Middle Drive. That's, they're the only ones getting them.
Is this, is your question addressing this concern?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Of course it is. So, are we drafting it as the leasee or the owner of the building?
Legal question.
We'll let staff answer that. Is that, go ahead, Ed?
Yes. The, depending on, you know, the vote this evening, this will be, I, the information will be referred to Pat Bond. I'm sure he'll put together a very detailed legal agreement that ties the request for funds with the TIF application to a time period so that we, you know, they have a ten-year lease. They're not going to move with the amount of money that they spent. But just in case there's a consideration or concern about that, the money will, the TIF application funding will be linked to a specific timeframe as detailed by Mr. Bond.
So, I would just ask for next week's council meeting for final approval. We'll make sure that, could Pat have that drafted? Before that meeting, before we go to vote?
I'll be sending him an email right after the meeting, depending on how the vote goes.
Okay. I'm not, Eric? Okay, no other questions? We'll call, please.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
We don't have all the information.
Yeah.
Alderman Sizmarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Next topic, our favorite, water and sewer rate discussion. Brad?
Second.
Twenty's not here.
You got a second?
Go ahead, Ed, or Brad?
Are you serious? Huge?
Is there a second?
Huge, is that it?
To what, tables?
Table?
Are you serious?
Do you want to say?
What then?
Draw your motion before you go to potty.
I would draw my motion.
Thank you. Thanks for saying it on mic.
Kid-friendly show we have here, folks. Go ahead, Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, that the motion at hand has been disposed of. Yeah, we, you had the memo in the packet, kind of outlining where we're at with the water fund, water and sewer fund relative to its funding level and the rates. So, we decided to try to, I don't know, color the conversation a little bit, clarify a few things, and demystify it a little bit with some slides here tonight. I know there's probably a number of different thoughts and options on the board. So, I'm going to present kind of the framework around what the memo was written, but certainly open for other conversations and other ideas. So... So, just looking at the current structure of the water and sewer fund. For the water, the fixed rate's three oh six, and that hasn't changed in, boy, I think at least ten years. The variable rate's ten ninety-three. That changed by one dollar last year, or this January first. It was about this time last year. It got changed by a dollar. The sewer fix is three oh six as well. Residential sewer per thousand gallons, seven sixty-two. That was changed two years ago by a dollar. And then, you can see the commercial and food service rates there. And by ordinance, those are fifty-five and sixty percent higher than the residential rate. Current condition, the fiscal year FY eighteen, which is the current year we're in, had a budgeted deficit of one point four seven million. The full debt service for the North wastewater treatment plant upgrade project currently is approximately one point nine million. And all the deficit numbers before depreciation, depreciation's not cash, so not as concerned about that. And the pre-debt service number actually showed a surplus of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So, skipping a bullet. So, what that shows is that the O and M costs of the water and sewer fund are covered sufficiently by our current rates, which leads to conversation that the deficit is driven pretty much solely by the debt service for the treatment plant. The pre-audited...
Hang on. That's an important point. Could you say that louder?
Close to the mic, sure.
For those that are watching at home, because that's an important thing.
Sure. So, the pre-debt number in the fiscal eighteen budget was a surplus of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, which means that if there was no debt service, if there was no thirty million dollars of bonds for the treatment plant, the rate structure that's in place now that we just saw on the previous page, these rates right here are sufficiently covering the operations and maintenance of the water and sewer system. Actually generating a surplus. And so, if you just do the math between the two, the, that's where the deficit comes in, is the coverage for the debt service for the treatment plants.
Thank you.
Sure. Just going forward, the, the pre-audited, and it's pretty close to being done, but the pre-audited deficit for fiscal seventeen was one point eight million dollars in the water and sewer fund. And again, those numbers aren't, they're significant, but they weren't necessarily the biggest surprise as the council, you know, wished to, you know, delay the increase as much as possible, spread out over time, and use cash on hand to, to moderate that a little bit. Unfortunately, we're getting close to the point that that's not sustainable anymore. And then, again, at the bottom, the deficits are directly related to the full realization of the debt service payments for the treatment plants. So, the water rate history, and I was talking about, you know, kind of spreading it out. So, went back to the memo from two thousand and fourteen that staff prepared and presented. And the second column, the actual, is what the council at those times voted on and approved. Two thousand and sixteen, there was a dollar on the sewer side. This is just the water side. But based upon the rate analysis, we did the actual wooden rate analysis and the pledge to the IPA. The third column, where it says needed, is what the rates, you know, quote-unquote, should have been to provide coverage at that time. And then, the third column is the difference in what was needed, required, and what was actually approved. And then, so that's, so it's twofold-part problem. If you, in the memo, there was also the reduction in consumption that comes into play because the, going back to the rate structure, the fixed cost is a very, very small portion of the rate model, and it's all volumetric. It's all based on usage. And, you know, the pricey elasticity and demand elasticity of a commodity, as prices go up, people tend to use less of it. So, you kind of a double-barreled issue here with the rates lagging and then the lowering of consumption generates less revenue. So, going into, look at the historical rate usage. You know, we had accounted for some decline in usage in the model, the actual model. Our models all included a decline in, in water usage. We thought in, between fifteen and sixteen, we kind of plateaued, you know, with the residential water usage kind of going back up between fifteen and sixteen. Those numbers moderating. However, if you look at seventeen, it's gone down another, what, over ten percent, fifteen percent. The water usage has continued to go down. And so, you know, I think we ran an analysis that said if the rates, if the consumption was the same as it was back in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, we wouldn't have any problems from a rate structure standpoint. But with that decline in usage of, you know, significant decline in usage over that time, that's put a further strain on the system, on the revenues generated. This chart I got a couple of years ago and...
Question for you. So, you talked about consumption usage going down, and maybe this is an Ed question. But is it going down? Because is there a way to tell what's coming from residential and what's coming from commercial? Like Alderman Sizmarzki mentioned, we do have some empty buildings, you know, and they're paying a higher rate?
Sure. So, the, this table here is, yeah, non-residential and residential.
Sorry, I missed that.
So, yes, I mean, it is, if you look at the, the full data set, it is, there is a significant decrease in the commercial and industrial uses. And a lot of that's not even necessarily due to vacancy. It's due to usage. I know the Public Works Department has gone through and changed out a lot of two- and three-inch meters to one, one-and-a-half inch meters because they went from some manufacturing facility to three toilets.
So, when, and so when the memory care comes on fall of seventeen, would that be considered residential or non-residential? It is residential, that building? Well, wait.
Well, it's a business.
How is it being rated? Right.
I would believe it would be under the commercial header. I mean, there's people living there, but it's a...
It's a business.
It's a care facility, yeah, not a, not an apartment or condo.
Thanks for clarifying that. So, that could help fill a gap a little bit.
Little bit, but...
Couple of comments on the board up here. Go ahead, Mayor.
Now, the memory care, I've had these conversations, and I think it's about a hundred. Mr. Wilson's figuring about a hundred, hundred and fifty thousand out of the memory care building, potentially.
Correct. And that's just based on buildings of a similar size and potential use. So, I mean, it will help, but it's not going to cover the whole one point four million dollar. It's a dent. But, you know, and then, you know, I know the first couple of months, they can only have a couple of people, so they have to get up and running. And so, by the time it's, it's full, it's probably going to be another year or so, so.
Okay. Alderman Jacob?
Didn't we recently receive a pretty big check for memory care? Does that go to this fund or where does?
Brad?
Where does that money go to?
The, part of the, their permit fees, that payment schedule, part of it does go to the water fund. It's already been factored into, into the model.
Anything else before we continue on? Anybody else?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Brad.
Yeah, just talking about the elasticity of, of pricing and consumption. I got this a couple of years ago at a conference, and they said they've updated it, but I've been unable to get another one out of the Environmental Finance Center at the University of North Carolina. But you can see the, the dots there, and I don't remember if there's, if there's a pointer on this thing. You know, but if you look, the, the dots, the vertical axis is increase or decrease in revenue. The horizontal axis is increase in rates. And you can see, my favorite one out there is the place that, you know, raised the rates fifty percent and generated ten percent less revenue the next year. So, they increased their, their rate structure by fifty percent and made less money with significantly higher rates. Got another one out there, a hundred and ten percent rate increase, and they generated five percent more revenue. They over-doubled their rates and only generated five percent more revenue. So, you can see that there's definitely some elasticity in, in the demand. You know, some of them mirror up pretty well. Some of them not so much. Just food for thought on the elasticity of, of usage versus rates.
Do we, do we keep any data on weather and how that influences those rates or our rates like historic?
Yeah, you're talking about the usage itself. It's more, you know, anecdotal. I guess, looking back, we thought that plateaued a couple of years ago that I believe, looking back, was a rather warm summer. The summer before and after was, was drier or wetter, more moderate. You know, also, the city had the program where, you know, we're doing rain barrels. So, if people are keeping rain barrels to water their plants, gardens, they're not using as much water. So, there's a few different factors. But certainly, a thing called seasonality and weather conditions do, do make a difference, yeah. So, I know this page is a little scary, and we break it down a little bit further as we go. The rate adjustment that will be needed in a complete vacuum to cover the one point four million dollar shortfall, purely based on the variable rate side, would be three dollars and fifty cents per thousand gallons. So, it was one twenty-five, which was previously needed in the increase, and then additional two twenty-five, further changes in the system, and the continued decrease in water usage has been over the last year and a half more rapid than we had built into our model. If you wanted to do it all on the fixed side, just the fixed cost across the board, it'd be twenty-four dollars per month per account. You could sunset that. You know, I, as presented, I would not recommend the twenty-four dollars per month per account. I have a slide later that breaks that down a little bit. But, so that's just in a vacuum, if you were to do that, that's what it would, would be. And then, obviously, future rate modifications would be needed. The debt service was backloaded a little bit, so that's going to go up a little bit. And then, obviously, salaries and other costs go up over time as well.
Alderman Jacob?
A quick question. On this whole chart that you're showing us, I know when with the garbage, the new garbage company, we were saving some money and we're, we had talked about possibly using some of that money to help with this. Or is that already figured into this or is that not or?
So, I had mentioned that to Brad when he brought this up to me. And I guess, Brad, you want to, want to answer that?
Okay, sure. So, if, if you're asking if it's built into this particular slide or this analysis that we've talked about so far, no. You know, the direction during the budget time was to leave the money in the sanitation fund. And that's the latest direction that staff got from the council. So, that's the, you know, basis that we had to operate under. Certainly, there is some play in there that it could be realigned, reassigned. But based upon the most recent direction from the council, it was not built in. We do have a slide later that does talk about that a little bit, but...
Right. Before I censor frustration, and I had the same frustration, I see the look on your face. I, I thought the direction was different. I thought we saved that six dollars, I think it was, to apply to these so we wouldn't have this conversation this year. But the mayor is pretty anxious to answer, so let's, go ahead.
Well, when we had the discussion, it was like eight dollars. We gave two dollars back to the residents. We kept the six, and at that time, I said, to make sure we keep everything appropriate, we take the other six dollars or five dollars and move it to the fixed cost of the sewer. And that was kind of shot down. But the money is still there, and I'm not sure what that dollar amount is. I didn't ask Brad. I was, because I, I know him like a broken record to him when it comes to this stuff. So, the money, the money is sitting there, and he can do a transfer, you know, it's water and sewer fund, but, you know, and the sanitation is in there, so.
Alderman Woods, you have a follow-up to that?
The money is there.
Go ahead.
So, to make it a little simpler, because I think everybody's got the same question up here. We're going to spend two hours chipping away at it. So, if we can just add numbers to it, what do we need to increase to be safe and pay the debt? And then, we can look, we know what the other fixed number is, and then we can look to allocate that, right? That's going to help us make that decision.
Brad?
So, so right now, to make our model, I mean, we started this in two thousand and eleven, right? Doing the water study and coming up with the number. I'm looking at the old study from two thousand and eleven. The numbers haven't changed from your slide to this, more than ten, fifteen cents, right? So, if you tell me today, what's the absolute number I need, whether it's adding three fifty a thousand or four dollars to the fixed cost so that we can make a determination what to do with the balance of the six dollars or five dollars and eighty cents that was left from the savings on the garbage company? Does that make sense? Just a simpler math question is what I'm asking for.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Sure, thank you. Well, again, just, and then, can I do one more slide and then answer your question?
Sure, go ahead. Do two if you want. I'm sorry. Do two if you want, but I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
Appreciate it.
So, well, I'll, I'll, I'll answer half your question. Just i- if you want to keep everything the same in the water fund, the same level of funding, capital expenses, et cetera, et cetera, it's the three fifty per thousand gallons. Now, if you want to take five or six dollars of the sanitation money and move that over, then that would take off, what, five hundred thousand dollars, depending on, give or take, depending how much you did. And then that could come down to a quarter per hundred thousand. So if it was five hundred thousand, that would come down to a dollar twenty-five to two twenty-five. So there's a couple of different-
So the three fifty would then be two and a quarter?
Correct. If you added six dollars to the fixed cost in the sewer fund and then reduced the garbage rate by six dollars, that would come down to two twenty-five. The other option that could be in play is, you know, something to be considered. I don't know where the, the level of appetite for this is, but this year, in the CIP, we reduced the capital spending on the water side by three hundred thousand. So theoretically, we could go through and look at the projects and see if there's any for a year or two that could get cut out or pushed back. And then, so if you'd reduce the level of capital spending for a year or two, you could stabilize it that way, and then over the next couple of years, increase the rates a little bit slower to restore the capital. So you cut capital a little bit for a couple of years, and then build the rates back up through that, to change the model a little bit, too. So there's really three different things you could do. There's the fixed costs, the variable rate, and then you could theoretically play around with the, the capital spending to cover some of that deficit as well.
Alderman Woods?
So, I'm normally against the fixed cost thing, but I think, given the scenario and all the things at play, and then the fact that the consumption will continue to go down, because we're going from a manufacturing-based economy here to logistics, and logistics has two hundred thousand square foot building with eight sinks and eight toilets in it, and that's all the water to use versus water jets and all kinds of stuff in the manufacturing climate. So we're going to continue to see that slide, no matter what we do with the water rate. So what, do we have a model where access on the fixed costs? Let's say if we raise fixed costs from, where are we at today on, on the fixed costs?
Three oh six.
Three oh six. And, and actually, I think if I look at the old, old, uh, old projections, that's what they, we're looking to go to three oh six, right?
Yep.
And so, what's on the sewer right now?
It's three oh six.
Three oh six also. And that, from the old projections, was supposed to be three eight four in, in seventeen. So I guess if we can do, I wouldn't necessarily want to make it all the fixed cost portion, but do you have something in mind for a bigger fixed cost and lower variables, and then blending in the sanitation surplus?
Yes. Can I have a quick clarification? Can, can the savings from the garbage savings, can that be applied only to the sewage? Is that correct or incorrect?
Well, it could be applied really technically to either, because it's a, it's a combined system.
That's what I thought, right.
So it's one pot of money, so it's really just what you want to call it.
The fund just needs to be, it should be at zero, right?
Yeah, it just needs to, yeah.
Okay. So even though this is the preferred method, it's, it's not mandated by statute that it has to be applied at sewer. I guess it doesn't matter, but-
No, it's not. Although, from a, from an accounting standpoint, you know, the debt service is for the sewer treatment plant.
All right.
So from, like I said, an accounting standpoint, an audit standpoint, it, it really should be applied to the sewer portion of it.
From an audit standpoint, okay.
Yeah. And a best practices standpoint. See, kind of hard to argue raising the water rates to pay for a sewer treatment plant. It's two different things.
Okay. Mayor?
Yeah, I'll say, I'll say it again. The savings from the garbage, we've got about six dollars. In May, there's going to be an increase because, per the contract. So should definitely move at least five dollars from the garbage. So the residents will get a decrease in the garbage, and there'll be a five dollar on the fixed cost. That's a wash, pretty much. I mean, we have people in the city, I think there's over three hundred accounts that are sewer-only, and they really haven't seen an increase in, forever. I think they got a fifty cents a couple of years ago, but within the past eight years, seen nothing. And besides that five dollars, that won't even be enough. Probably have to add another couple bucks on that, two or three dollars, to get the fixed cost up. And again, there's the six hundred and eighty-eight thousand transfer out of the water fund. I'm not sure. I know it's a quick conversation, but general fund is still good, and I think might be a slight surplus. I know a few years ago, we didn't transfer the full amount. That could be another way to make up some of the money. We don't have all those numbers. I know the sales tax, right, are up a little bit and whatnot. But again, those are, at least, five dollars from sanitation, that bill goes down. Fixed sewer cost, and on the sewer cost, like I said, because this is for the treatment plant, put a sunset on it. The loan is paid off, the money goes away. You might have to keep fifteen percent of it, because let's face it, over the next twenty years, our fixed cost is going to go up. So, but you could at least eighty-five percent of that get sunset and goes away once the loan is paid. We keep ra, you can raise the rates all you want, but people are going to keep using less water, and you still have to pay that one point nine million dollars every year, no matter what.
All right. Alderman Jacob?
I know the mayor just said you could sunset it, but we also have another treatment plant that needs work, so.
Alderman says Marskey?
I'm going to make a motion for the twenty-four dollar fixed.
Motion for the twenty-four dollar fixed. Is there a second? No second?
Nope. I don't think that we want to, why we want to put it on the fix. I don't think that we want to put twenty-four dollars on the-
No, the-
Fix.
However, he had it planned out for the fix, not all of it.
Brad, you need clarity to help build the motion? I think we need-
The fixed rate, yeah, the fixed rate.
What would you need to add to the fix rate?
Twenty-four dollars.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
A month.
Right. A month.
You'd have to add twenty-four.
Fixed cost per month, correct?
Right.
To the sewer.
No, that's, that's why I had to interject, because I knew it was add completely.
Okay, twenty-four dollars per month to the fixed cost of the sewer.
Right.
Okay. Not to the water, to the sewer. Is that, is that what he's, is that, are you understanding correctly? Is that right? Or are we understanding correctly?
That's all you understand, that's all you said?
Yeah, that's, my understanding of the motion was, he was talking about the second small, medium-sized bullet on this slide.
Right. Would be flat out twenty-four dollars per month, per account, on sewage.
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. Can we still ask questions if there's not a second?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor?
Brad, so we have five dollars, at least five dollars at the garbage, and we go to three dollars, that's eight dollars. It's an additional eight dollars. I know we're short one point, whatever. Is that going to, can we see those numbers? Because I don't think we're ready to make a twenty-four dollar addition. I mean-
Correct.
I know what the numbers are, but we have five already. We might need three. If we do eight, how does that, and leave the variable rate alone for now? Because eight dollars is significant. I mean, it's really three dollars, because they're already paying five dollars. Most of the people, some people don't have garbage, or some people are sewer-only, and they haven't had an increase in years. So, I, I know you don't have those numbers for us today, but maybe, I don't know, I'm not sure exactly where the council wants to go, but-
Brad, do you have-
It'd be nice to see the numbers and how our fund would look, you know.
Before you give the numbers, to the mayor's point, you pointed to the sewer quite a bit. Just to be clear, that's where the majority of the people in the resident, the residents have at the sewer, even if they're not hooked up to water. We have the most people connected to sewer, right?
Correct.
Okay. So that's our quickest way to revenue. Brad?
Yeah. If you just do eight dollars on the fixed cost, that would generate approximately five hundred thousand in additional revenue. So, short one point three, one point four, that's five hundred, so you're still short about eight hundred.
Mayor follow-up?
Yeah, I have a follow-up. But that's what I said, for the last couple of years, I've been talking about the CIP, where we had red and red, and I said, we got rid of some of the red, because we had some surplus. At some point, we can't spend seven million dollars on projects. We might have to cut it back to four and a half million or five million. And CIP's coming up in the next couple of months. We're going to have to start making some of those decisions. Otherwise, you're going to have to raise the people twenty-four dollars tonight at one shot. That's a little stiff. I, I can't deal with that.
Brad?
Right. Yeah, and to that point, that's why we prepared this slide, was saying, okay, we need to try to somehow get close to zero through combination of, of-
Transfer.
Of, of things. So if you want to do the fixed, you know, the eight dollars, since I was throwing out, and you're eight hundred thousand dollars short, you know, you know, it's a hundred, a quarter per hundred thousand on the variable side, so that'd be two dollars. Or you could do a dollar and then reduce capital by four hundred thousand. Or you could reduce capital by six hundred thousand and do the variable a dollar and a half. I mean, kind of, it's a, it's a, it's a pie. And, you know, once, you know, we've kind of agree on one part of it, then we can frame in the other, the other couple of portions of it. So, I mean, you know, it's a, you know, certainly, as, you know, unpopular as it may or may not be, you know, I mean, cutting back on capital for a couple of years to, to stabilize it, to not do the rate shock, to slow it down, yeah. It, yeah, it's, it's on the, I talked to Mr. York a little bit before the meeting, and, you know, that being said, there's a couple of projects for next year that they're preparing the bids for, so, not to put any pressure on anybody, but we don't want to send out a, a bid for a project that we're then going to cut a month later, so.
Got it. Alderman Woods?
Yeah. Brad, how many years to retire the bonds?
A portion of the bonds are retired in thirty-three, a portion in thirty-five. It's twenty thirty-five, twenty thirty-five.
So twenty-one to twenty-six years, is that?
No, they're both twenty-year, twenty-year terms.
Twenty years, okay. So, twenty years. So this is something we're looking at for twenty years. So it's not a matter of dodging a project, one project or two projects. This is an ongoing thing. Those dollars are ongoing. It's the same million eight for twenty years. So while I like the idea to, to kind of blend it a little bit, I mean, we really have to seriously look at it, because it is, isn't a one or two-year thing. It's the next twenty years that we have to come up with that. So when we start slicing projects out, you know, kind of affects the, the out years, because those things that are deteriorating continue to deteriorate. And that's in part why we got here with the treatment plant to begin with, because it was neglected for years. And instead of putting maybe eighteen to twenty million in it, we had to put thirty, thirty-five million in it. And, and now we're having the hard conversation. So in two thousand eleven, when we started putting this together, we, we did the projections, and we knew the dollars had to go up. As a council, I think we've done everything we could to keep it down. And I'm not saying go crazy and put the twenty-four, because you didn't see me raising my hand on the twenty-four either. But we really have to be serious about raising it, and, and maybe it's four dollars or five dollars, besides playing with the, the rebate or the, the garbage we're saving from there. Because it's going to be an ongoing, everybody wants to kick the can down the road. I get it, and what I'm saying is not popular, but it's required to pay off the million eight, unless we're just going to say we're not going to do any more projects. And I'm not saying that we can't look at some of those and reduce what we're doing, but they continue to need to be done, too. So we still have to run the city. So I, I just wanted to make that.
I think where the city is today, too, with development, right? I think we're pouring so much money into that piece of it, that eventually we could scale back on some of that development, but we're at a pretty critical point. So I would agree with Alderman Woods. Alderman Jacob?
When you say twenty-four dollars, we would technically not have to do twenty-four, because it would be twenty-four minus the five, correct? Or twenty-four plus the five?
Minus.
Minus, okay. So we, I mean-
We have one timer.
So I mean, if, like Alderman says Marskey, he said do the twenty-four, we could technically do nineteen.
Yeah, that's not on the board. They have, there's twenty-four, and then adding the three, five dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
So, go ahead.
Honestly, I would say, so we need twenty-four. If we do eight right now, that's a third of the way. We're going to have to make some decisions. Either we make the decision for the extra nineteen dollars, or we look at the CIP closely and look at the transfer. We transfer six hundred and eighty-eight thousand out of the water fund every year. So, and I don't know where the numbers are this year, Brad, and I doubt if you have them, because I was going to ask you, but I, I left you alone this time. But I know there might be some money there also.
Sure.
Unfortunately, we, we got to look at moving the five dollars from the sanitation to the sewer fixed cost, and you should add at least two, if not three dollars. Don't forget, the fi, the five dollars for probably eighty-five percent of the people is, they're not going to see it.
So do I have a motion to raise it?
No, I can't make, I don't make motions.
No, I heard you. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, to, in an effort to get the ball rolling and do the unpopular thing, but necessary, I'll make a motion to raise the fixed rate for the sewer five dollars. And then direct the, the savings on the refuge fund, the garbage fund, to be-
So it's ten dollars?
So it would be ten dollars total.
Five from the sanitation.
Yeah, yeah.
Five fixed rate on the sewer, that would be the increase, and then to take the savings from the garbage.
What about the sunset? Sunset eighty-five percent of it at the end?
You know, it's hard to say, yeah, I don't want to go into perpetuity, but twenty years from today, the treatment plant's twenty years older.
Right.
So I, I would say there should be something in there to reassess this. You want to call it the sunset clause or, or whatever, or reassessment of that, or eighty percent of the fixed costs reduced. Maybe you could bring something to us, if you could do some projections, that we could add that in there, put some kind of sunset clause on that.
I don't know what the number is. Maybe we can bring it to council, if you could work that out.
Alderman Jacob?
I guess we're, we're still going to be short, like-
Fourteen dollars.
Fourteen dollars, so.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah. So my thought process was, we'd need somewhere around that eighteen, nineteen dollars, even with the, the garbage. So if we do five now, maybe next year, six, and so over the three years, we'll get there. And in the intro, we'll do the short-term fix of reducing projects, scaling back on the projects to make up, this year we'll have to make up eight hundred thousand, next year we'll only have to make up four hundred thousand, and the third year we'll-
Right.
What, through transfers, as the mayor said.
So just for the people at home, there will be, if, if there is a surplus in the general fund, meaning we don't spend all our money, we're able to put that towards the water. Or incorrect, right?
That's incorrect.
Go ahead, Mayor. I know, that's the impression, so I just want to make sure you, it's clear.
If, if the general fund has a surplus, like one year we had, we didn't transfer the full six hundred and eighty-eight thousand. I think we transferred three hundred thousand and kept three hundred and eighty or three hundred and fifty back into the water fund. There's ways to work, again, all depends on the money sets out.
Right. But it can be transferred. We don't, I'm not saying all of it, but-
Well, like Mr. Wilson always says, he needs that six eighty-eight for administrative costs.
Right.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
I beg to differ. It's just me.
Eugene, Alderman Eugene was, I think?
We could always take the gambling revenue and put it towards the water.
Where's Tony?
I'm the same.
Alderman, excuse me, not Alderman, Brad, follow up that? I gotta go into it though.
Just to-
That's a hundred fifty grand.
Yeah, hundred, little over a hundred thousand, so I mean, it's not-
But isn't that dictated towards streetscape projects particularly?
Yeah, the council direction at the time was to earmark that money for street, streetscape, economic development, you know, improving the aesthetics of the town, et cetera, so there would have to be some change in council policy to reassign those funds.
And that fund, that, that, does that fund what currently is the streetscape that we offer, like the, what's that funding we offer for businesses?
So you-
facade program, mayor?
Yeah, no, the gaming money goes into the tourism fund, and the facade program's funded through the capital, the CIP, correct?
So, would you have a motion on the floor? Is there a second? We have a second on the floor, any questions? Looks like there's a question, Alderman, Roy Wesley?
So Brad, the bottom line is, how much are we increasing the water or sewer? Sewer, how much are we increasing it?
Alderman Woods, would you restate your motion, please?
Five dollars total?
We're increasing the fixed rate on the sewer portion, five dollars.
Ten dollars with five of that being a rebate.
The bottom line is, who's gonna see the-
Five dollars with the seat.
That's what I'm saying.
Any other questions? Correct. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, roll call, or clarification?
Yeah, we're just making sure we were clear, so it, the- Right, but it would be a net of ten, a gross of ten.
Correct.
Correct, but it would net to five.
Correct. Increase ten, visible five with that rebate of the five dollars in the garbage fund. So we're asking you to take the funds that you've been keeping in the sanitation, in your garbage fund, that you said we didn't give you direction on, we're asking you to take five of that, five of those dollars, of the eight that we saved homeowners, renegotiating the contract, take five of that dollars, put that towards the ten dollar increase that Alderman Woods is proposing, and what people will see on their bill is a five dollar fixed increase on their sewer. Does that make sense? Or is that possible?
I'll defer to Alderman Woods for a moment, and then I'll, I'll answer.
Is that wrong?
I know, I know these numbers are going around and they're confusing, now I'm confused, but, so the- The fixed rate on the sewer is gonna go up five dollars. Right? That's not gonna raise all the money we need, so, right, we're gonna take money from the savings from the garbage, and apply five dollars of that towards what we need to retire the bonds, how they marry, that's not gonna show on the, the consumer's bill, right? So it's not physically gonna go up when we offset it, it's only gonna go up five dollars on the bill.
Mayor?
So when we get the bill, we got water, sewer, and garbage, let's say the garbage right now is whatever, eighteen dollars, I think, or something, so it's gonna, or, no, no, it's like-
It's eighteen.
No, well, but it's like twenty-three dollars, so it's gonna come down to like eighteen, and now the fixed cost, you're gonna move that five dollars over to the fixed cost, that's gonna bring it up to eight oh six, plus the additional five dollars, it'll make it thirteen oh six. You're taking the five dollars from the garbage, so when the people look at their bill, their garbage, if it's twenty-three dollars right now, or twenty-four dollars, it's gonna show eighteen or nineteen, whatever that, I don't have that, right? Is that what, or you're just saying leave the garbage the way it is?
I'm glad I asked this question.
And, and they transfers the money from the garbage to the sewer?
Alderman Woods, clarification?
Correct.
Okay, that's what it is.
Okay, so you're leaving the garbage. It's the same thing.
Same, it's absolutely the same thing, just different optics.
Five dollars up.
Right.
Eugene Wesley, Alderman Eugene Wesley, would you like a clarification?
Correct, you are correct.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, anything from staff, anything else? Anything to add?
I'll wait for the vote.
Wait for the vote, okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
No.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman says Marskey?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
All right, so that passes. Did you have anything else to add, Brad? We'll take a thirty-second intermission, anybody know a bear's game score? Go ahead.
No.
Go ahead, Brad.
Just, that the, that the, that ten dollar net effect, the five and the five, ten dollar net effect on the fixed, is about six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Did you guys hear that?
It's about six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, um, so, you know, for those of you keeping score at home, you're still short seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Well.
Okay. Go ahead.
I guess to Alderman Wesley's point, you know, again, in speaking to Mr. York earlier tonight, there's some of the projects that they're getting ready to bid out, the design contracts for, so if, you know, there's- There you go. If, if, I think there's gonna be a want to cut some capital, you know, the sooner the better, before they start bidding out projects and going to the RFP committee and things like that. Well, the CIP, we constructed in November, December, presented January, but in talking to Mr. York, they're gonna be sending out design contracts in the next couple of months to get ready for projects to start made first, so if, if the intent is to, you know, perhaps cut a project or two, like, you know, the one that would probably fit the bill, just right out of the box, right, wrong, or indifferent, I lost my page, there's, you know, a couple of projects that could.
So Brad, maybe offline, we could spend some time as finance chair and vice chair, I'll invite as well, and we can figure out how we could do it constructively before CIP?
I mean, there's a project that would cover that deficit just in and of itself.
What's that project?
Would you like to share that?
Oh sure, it's the Royal Oksloft Station.
Mayor?
Brad, while you're checking this stuff out, maybe by next week, it could be informational, could be in the manager's report, how's the general fund doing this year? Do you foresee any surplus that we could reduce the transfer, and how much would that surplus be? Because you might, for all I know, you've got five hundred thousand surplus, we only transfer a hundred and eighty-eight, and we just made five hundred thousand, so.
Okay, if you could include that update, it would be appreciated.
It might only be, it might be short, I don't know.
So based on the fact of the score, that being blown out, we'll continue, go ahead, Alderman Eugene Wesley? I'd say keep it dark on I task the street for a little longer, right? So, so we have, we have a plan in place, before CIP, we will sit, the finance chairman and, and vice chair will sit with Brad, come up with some recommendation that we'll bring back to council, to discuss, with the idea, and Mrs. Alderman says Marskey's idea of potentially maybe one project from each ward, we'll talk about some ideas. Brad, anything else you wanna add?
Sounds like a great plan.
Okay, so items to be considered at future meetings, vehicle stickers on October twenty-sixth, this just made that one an easy conversation, anything else you wanna add? So any, anything else you want, anybody else wants to add? Okay, is there a motion to-
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, that passes, meeting adjourned.